Greetings everyone and welcome to the 2023 Houston Independent School District Superintendent Holiday Greeting Card Reception. My name is Ricky F. Palador Jr. and I'm so excited to be here with you all today. I'm the Visual Arts Coordinator for specifically elementary students but all art students. So can we please just give yourselves a round of applause for making it this far? So without further ado, all the way from the Kinder High School for Performing and Visual Arts, under the direction of Martin Longoria, please welcome Mariachi Los Paseros.
Un toro viene rodado muy bien coleado por Don Abor. Pretendaron un toro pa' que lo monte Don Felimón. Y mientras sus lanzadores lo nanan y hasta con gran primor. Bonito es el harripeo y cuánta es su animación. Yo quiero montarme un toro pa' que me mire mi amor. Un payu, un payu.
Un payu.
Un payu, un payu.
Un payu.
Yo quiero montarme un toro pa' que me mire mi amor. Que rechulos la fiesta, la fiesta charra, fiesta del sol. De los charros valientes dan con sus cantos la vocación. Haripos un festejo que huele a surco y a tradición. Remedo de la paena más admirada de mi nación. Bonito es el harripeo y cuánta es su animación. Yo quiero montarle a un toro pa' que me mire mi amor. Un payu, un payu.
Un payu.
Un payu, un payu.
Un payu.
Yo quiero montarle a un toro pa' que me mire mi amor.
Sí señor.
I want to give a special shout out to our principal, Dr. Priscilla Rivas, for all her support. I hope you'll enjoy the rest of our performance. Here's Kema for you.
Y tú como piedra preciosa, como divina joya, aliaza de verdad. Si mis ojos no me mienten, si mis ojos no me engañan, tu belleza sin igual.
Tuve una vez la ilusión de tener un amor que me hiciera mader. Llámame, llámame mujer, yo te supe que cuando arriba me amaba. Llámame mi Dios, porque quiera mujer para mí en mi vida. Por eso dice cantar, gritar que te quiero, mujer consentida. Por eso hereo mi voz diciendo tu nombre y mi nieto de amor. Que me hiciera mader. Cuando arriba mi alma, lllámame mi Dios, porque quiera mujer para mí en mi vida. Por eso dice cantar, gritar que te quiero, mujer consentida. Por eso hereo mi voz diciendo tu nombre y mi nieto de amor.
Sabes una cosa. Tengo algo que decirte y no sé cómo empezar a explicar lo que te quiero contar. Sabes una cosa. No encuentro las palabras, ni verso, rima, prosa. Quizá con una rosa te lo pueda decir. Sabes una cosa. No sé ni desde cuándo llegaste, de repente mi corazón se puso a cantar. Sabes una cosa. Te quiero niña hermosa y te entrego en esta rosa la vida que me pueda quedar. Doy gracias al cielo por haberte conocido, por haberte conocido. Doy gracias al cielo y le cuento a las estrellas lo bonito que sentí, lo bonito que sentí cuando te conocí. Doy gracias al cielo por haberte conocido, por haberte conocido. Doy gracias al cielo y le cuento a las estrellas lo bonito que sentí, lo bonito que sentí cuando te conocí.
Para pasagarles al cielo.
Sabes una cosa. Tengo algo que decirte y no sé cómo empezar a explicar lo que te quiero contar. Sabes una cosa. No encuentro las palabras, ni verso, rima, prosa. Quizá con una rosa te lo pueda decir. Sabes una cosa. No sé ni desde cuándo llegaste, de repente mi corazón se puso a cantar. Sabes una cosa. Te quiero niña hermosa y te entrego en esta rosa la vida que me pueda quedar. Doy gracias al cielo por haberte conocido, por haberte conocido. Doy gracias al cielo y le cuento a las estrellas lo bonito que sentí, lo bonito que sentí cuando te conocí. Sabes, sabes una cosa. Que yo te quiero, que por ti me muero. Si estás en la cruz, sabes una cosa, sabes una cosa.
Como decía mi papá, ese va pa' ti chiquita. Basta el pie de tu ventana pa' que sepas que te quiero. O a mí no me quieres nada, pero yo por ti me muero. Dice que ando muy errado, eres gente de mis sueños, pero se han equivocado. Porque si eras te quiero, ya te adoré, y olvidarte no puedo. Uy, así sonido. Yo sé que hay muchas mujeres y que sobra que me quieran, pero único me importa, solo pienso en ti morena. Mi corazón te he escogido y ahora no quiero verlo, ya pobre mucha sufrido. Ahora tienes que quererlo, ¿qué voy a hacer? Si me veras te quiero, ya te adoré, olvidarte no puedo, ¿qué voy a hacer? Si me veras te quiero, ya te adoré, olvidarte no puedo.
Amazing, right? Yes. So we are so excited to have you guys here this morning. Coming together to honor our young artists is always a great way to start the day, right? Start the week, Tuesday, it's enough, right? So I would love to acknowledge some folks in the room. They ready? Alrighty. We had an amazing group of finalists come in this year. Amazing group of artists that were, artwork was submitted. And the finalists, which are all seated here today. When I call your school name, if you can, your artist stand up would be great. Alright, Community Services School. Lorenzo Early Childhood Center, yes. Herod Elementary. St. George Place. Awesome. Brisco Elementary. Elliott Elementary. River Oaks Elementary. Black Middle School. Gregory Lincoln K-8, yes. Lanier Middle School. Meyerland Performing and Visual Arts Middle School. Ortiz Middle School. Lamar High School. Chavez High School. Westbury High School. Northside High School. Fantastic. And Waltrip High School. Absolutely. We also are fortunate to have our administrators here, lots of administrators here. If you guys could go ahead and stand up, any administrators? Principals, administrators, magnet coordinators, we appreciate you guys. This work, as we know, starts at home, always. But when it comes to school, we need that foundation of administration supporting our creative efforts with our students. So I would like to, before we say thank you to our parents, I'd like for all of our fan club members, which I love to acknowledge. That's our sisters and our brothers and our friends and our neighbors, go ahead and stand up. Yes. Nice. And our parents, please stand up. Yes. Yes. As I said before, the work of being creative starts at home. Starts from when they're tiny, itty-bitty, and it will grow. And it will grow and grow and grow as we see these creative musicians around us. And for our high schoolers, we have some seniors that are here that are finalists, and so it just keeps going. So keep it up, keep it up. So the posters that you see that are covered, we're gonna unveil shortly. And they will be at Hattie Mae White, our district office, presented through the end of December. So everyone can come through and see these amazing works of art. So we are very thrilled with that. The images that are on the tables, your artists can take back to campus with them. And it's very, very exciting with that. We also can purchase, you can purchase cards through Printing Services. And they, in, oh, I can't, I don't know if anybody looked in their bags, but there may or may not be little surprises in there. But Printing Services, you can order the cards. So beautiful thing is the Fine Arts, as well as our superintendent. Lots of campuses send out the holiday cards to community partners all over the city, all over the United States. And in some cases internationally, will receive your cards of the artists that are sitting here. So we're very thrilled with that. Alright, Mr. Palador.
So I just really want to come up and recognize just a few people that really made this day possible. So as Shandell said, each artist will receive their complimentary holiday greeting cards in their bags. But for today's winners, we really have great partnerships throughout the city, as well as in the district office, that really kind of make this day special, not only for me and Shandell, but also for the artist. And so the winners today will receive scholarships to attend an art class at the Glossel Junior School at the Museum of Fine Arts Houston. The winners will also receive from our great partners at Canes, Canes Gift Baskets, which are here. Yay. Alright. And most of our winners, all except for our pre-K winner, the pre-K winner will receive an Artist Starter Kit, okay? So give it up for the Artist Starter Kit, which is really provided by our partners at Texas Art Supply. So generous, along with other mediums that they've provided the winners. And our other three winners, elementary, middle school, high school, as well as a special recognition award, will receive Chromebooks to help further their artistic endeavors. I also want to say thank you so much to our Office of Special Projects and Events, which really went above and beyond. This event is usually held at Hattie Mae White, this year we moved it here. So they were so gracious to bring all of their belongings here and really set up the tables for us and make this a special event. So thank you so much to Special Events and the partnership. And of course, I also have to thank the Fine Arts Department, woo woo. All of my team here, you know, really pulling it together. Because we did move, we had to kind of recruit everyone to come on over this morning and help us out. So now, I think it's time for some special recognition awards. So this year, the special recognition awards came about because Superintendent Miles, you know, we had, so these are all of the campuses that participated on the back. And it was really difficult. Thank you so much to our executive directors and assistant superintendents for getting us down to that final seventeen and really putting the pressure on Mr. Miles, as his first year choosing the winners, to really had a great job of figuring out what the art truly was. But then there was special recognitions, which means there were two artists or two works of art that really moved the room. And we thought that, you know, for their hard work, we have to recognize them in some special way. And so now I will let Shandell introduce the special recognition award.
The pressure. Okay. So when you are called, please come up and you'll be able to share some words. This particular special recognition is given to a student that is absolutely showing promise very early on. And it's really wonderful. We've had a huge expansion this year in our early childhood centers. And we have art teachers at almost all of them. So it means that our youngest of youngest artists are experiencing art in their weekly lives, their daily lives. And we're thrilled with that. So the piece of art done by our pre-K student, Esbia Soto, from Lorenzo. Come on down. Ms. Hovar, are you here? You can come on. This piece is "Happy Holidays." It's beautifully done, multimedia. Reindeer has lots of legs, lots of beautiful, beautiful trees, and stars on the top, which is one of the most difficult forms and shapes to draw, just letting you know. That's hers. Beautiful. They are so strong. Love it. At the end, we'll take lots of photos, all the paparazzi will be out. So this next special recognition is to a student that we try to work as hard as we can for every campus that we have in our district. And as you know, our mighty district is a big one. This particular school works with students that need some extra help here and there. And we are so thrilled because we see this campus that does not have an art teacher all the time, showing incredible work in moving their kiddos toward all the creativity they can get in them. And so we are always thrilled. We received a card this year, look the anticipation, right? Alright. We received a card this year and we were both so moved by it that we were like, oh my gosh, we have to show everybody. So here we go. So this particular special recognition is for our Community Service School. The student is, was from Northside High School. And her name, she's a 12th grader, Eliana Velma Languna. Come on down. And we're so grateful that her teacher, Rebecca Vanrell, turned her work in, so congrats.
So I'm on where I probably saw my children, but I have three. And as a young mom, you know, I had to give up a lot of things. So to me, when I was younger, like my children, I used to like to color a lot and things like that. So to me, I was really excited to get to have the opportunity to do something childish and get to color and have fun and things like that. So thank you all for giving me the opportunity to be a kid again.
Alright, thank you guys so much. And to the campuses, we appreciate the support and love that you guys are supporting your students. Yes. So I have the pleasure of introducing the Kinder High School for Performing and Visual Arts, Mariachi. Here we go.
Navidad, navidad, hoy es navidad. Es un día de alegría y felicidad. Hey, navidad, navidad, hoy es navidad. Es un día de alegría y felicidad. No paras por no quién, es el día sin cesar. Y no amanos placer, que hoy es navidad. Si no te gusta, no paras de cantar. Es el día de alegría y buena voluntad. Hoy es navidad, navidad, hoy es navidad.
Hi, everyone. We hope you enjoyed our performance. We're very grateful to be here. And this is our last number. So sad, we have to go. But here is "Feliz Navidad." We hope you enjoy.
I don't know about you all, but I'm ready to go shopping. It is like the holiday season. And it's, one of the great things about the holidays, Superintendent greeting card is that the entries are due like October. So it's hard for the teachers and the students to get in their mind, like, this is October, what, but holiday? But it all works out. So we've really gotten the feeling. So now, it's time, without any further ado, I would like to first introduce everyone to Dr. Shannon Parrish, our fearless leader in the Enrichment Department, Fine Arts. She'll welcome us all.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here today. And thank you for the artists that you expressed yourselves on the canvas. Thank you for all that you do and continue to grow your craft. I want to thank our Chief Academic Officer, Kristin Hall, for her leadership and support, and our Executive Director, Margarita Guardia. But I have to say that one of the highlights of my year thus far was seeing the most decisive superintendent in the nation struggle to make a decision about choosing our finalist today. Superintendent Miles paced back and forth, and he took his time, methodically looking at each photo, each piece of artwork, because he was pulled into the wonder of art. The word "wonder" means a feeling of surprise mingled with admiration caused by something beautiful, unexpected, inexplicable. Art is an expression of creativity, imagination, and dreaming on canvas. The wonder of art is what our students have displayed here today and what our fearless leader, Superintendent Miles, leads us in every single day. Thank you for what you do, Superintendent Miles.
Thank you so much. And that's true. I pride myself on decision-making, but it was really, really tough. I had, first of all, it's great to see everybody here today. Christmas is my favorite holiday. You wouldn't think so, because when I was a little kid, we were very poor. My dad was in Vietnam or Korea on several Christmases. And two, I can remember very vividly, when I was five and six years old, when we didn't even have a tree or presents. But still, somehow, I enjoyed Christmas. And I think it's because when I went to school, it was such a celebration. And the teachers allowed us to make little Christmas ornaments and decorations. And it was the art in the school that gave us the spirit of Christmas, even if we went home and there was no wreath, there's no tree or anything like that. But it was that time in school that really, I remember. And so, it was particularly special for me when I went to the room and there was all this artwork. And I know the teachers had guided the students, and the students just, wow, their talents are just unbelievable. Unbelievable talented students that we have. And so, it was really tough. But it was also emotion-filled for me to pick. And they said I had to pick. So, I thought, you know, let's just let all of them be winners, but no, we had to pick. So I'm gonna name the winners? Is that? Okay. So I have to name the winners, but every single one of them were precious. And I don't know if we, I don't think we videotaped it, but you could see me struggling trying to pick the winner. All right. So, elementary school. The winner is 4th grade Alina Molina. The school is Herod Elementary School. The title is "Holiday Tree." And the teacher is Sylvia Perez. And can her teacher join her? Sylvia Perez. It's hard to believe a 4th grader could draw that. Wow. Thank you. Thank you. And for the middle school, 8th grade student Stella Williams. Stella goes to Meyerlin, PVA MS. The title is "Happy Holidays." And the teacher is Christina Gonzalez. So Christina Gonzalez and Stella Williams.
Um, hi. Thank you. Hi, my name's Stella, and I've been doing art for like the longest time. And thanks to Ms. Gonzalez at MPVA, I've gotten to grow my artistic ability so much and improve. Over 6th grade, I looked at my art back and I was so different. But I've grown so much as an artist because of MPVA and Ms. Gonzalez, and I'm so thankful for that and everyone who came here for me today. Thank you.
And we're gonna give Alina Molina a chance to say some words.
Hi, my name is Alina Molina. I go to Herod Elementary. I am in 4th grade. Ever since I learned how to hold pencils and colors, I would scribble little drawings, even if they were just squares or lines. To me, they look like flowers and little houses. My mom keeps all my little drawings up until now. I enjoy painting and coloring all my free time. My mom inspired me. She was really good at art, and just like her, art is one of my favorite subjects. I love Christmas and putting up a tree. And since the holiday is almost here, I decided to create a tree with lights.
Wow. Thank you. That's wonderful. And then finally, the high school is 12th grade Joslyn Ashcombe. Joslyn's at Westbury High School. The title is called "Holiday Flock." And the teacher is Amelia Kennison Lewis.
Hi, my name is Joslyn, and I'm from Westbury High School. This piece is to represent how people, different people, can come together and for the holidays. And thank you to my teacher in HIST for allowing me to, um, to, oh my gosh, to participate in this over the years.
All right. So you can see how wonderful this art is. And I'm gonna be sure to buy a box of these cards. But the second and third place winners were equally as brilliant. So congratulations to all the students and happy holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. And I would also like to recognize the Westbury High School photographers that are here today. The seniors helping out. Thank you, Westbury. Well, thank you all so much. Can we please have all of the winners and special recognition awardees come up to their artwork with their teacher? Thank you all so much for coming. You can feel free to enjoy refreshments in the lobby. Happy holidays. Thank you, Mr. Miles.
Hi, how are you?